Good evening and welcome to the Greenfield Public Schools School Committee meeting for Wednesday, June 11th, 2025. This meeting is being recorded by GCTV. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time. Not hearing any. Secretary Denis, will you call the role?
Yes. Chair Johnson Mossad?
Here.
Secretary Denis, I'm here. Vice Chair Sexton?
Here.
Member Goodwin?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Member Childs?
Here.
Member Martini? Member Martini, are you with us in virtual space?
Here.
Okay, we are all here and you have a quorum.
Wonderful. And it is 6:31 PM. We'll move on to public comment. Any, anyone in the room who wish to make public comment?
Yes.
Please come forward.
Hi, Judy Bennett. I live in Greenfield. I just wanted to say how much I appreciate that we were able to get contract negotiations concluded while Karen was still here. I think that made a really big difference and will make a difference to the district and the morale. I know it was not easy and we all put a lot of time and effort into it, so I just wanted to come forward and say I appreciate your time and your willingness to be part of the process. So, thank you Stephen and Karen and Stacy. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Marguerite Rancourt. I live in Greenfield. I just wanted to talk about, this is our superintendent's last school committee meeting. And I don't know if you all know that this was the first year in years that our community was rebuilt with faith and trust because of Karen's work. I have been here for 29 years. I have never seen a superintendent who comes to every event that is important to staff, families and students. She is at everything. And it is such a great loss. I don't know how you're going to replace her and find somebody that is as intelligent and dedicated and loving and wonderful and amazing. And our school district is hurting right now. Our hearts are hurting. You are never going to find anybody that is as talented and dedicated as she is. And that does not mean we all agree with everything she's done. What we do know is everything she's done was with one intent, to rebuild this community. And I am very worried about next year. But I just wanted to personally thank Karen because you inspired me. I didn't know I could work harder than I was already working, and I did. You know, she handed me a class of 26 students and said, whatever you need. This was one of the best years of my teaching career. And it is because of her leadership and her belief in us. And I am just heartbroken at where we're at right now. And it's going to hurt us. And I just needed to say it publicly that Karen, thank you for supporting all of us, our students, our community. And we recognize the work you did and we are going to miss you dearly. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment in the room? Any public comments on the line? Not seeing any. Thank you. Okay. We'll move on to the Greenfield Public Schools Parent Teacher Organizations End of Year Reports. Please come forward. Fill up chairs. And if you don't mind introducing yourselves and we look forward to your reports. Yes, please.
I'm Melissa McKenzie Webb and I represent Newton. And I also am active on GMS as well.
Excuse me. Andrea Michael, I represent GMS.
So, I'm just going to read. I think you guys all possibly have copies of this. I may add a few things along the way. AEL, the update was done by Leah Herrick, I believe. She would be the PTO president at AEL and that's not on here. They, they purchased and planted two trees in the playground area to replace a critical shade tree that was lost this year. They actually did it with a bunch of kids during their spring cleanup. It was really cute. They hosted community events throughout the year, such as a fun fall day clothing swap with a community meal. I believe they had spaghetti, cookies and cocoa movie night, a sweetheart dance, Earth Day cleanup and a gardening event. They supplied five new dramatic playsets, a grocery store, bakery, pizza food truck, and then there were some other little things as well to be rotated throughout each classroom throughout the year. PTO fully funded and executed Teacher Appreciation Week. The total funds raised were $5,241. They spent $1,991 on the things listed above. Today, they celebrated with their end of year party and they had a touch a truck event also that happened with their end of year party. And they're planning on purchasing an outdoor storage and an outdoor classroom setup over the summer for next year's use. On to Newton. Presented by Maggie, Liz and myself. We recently hosted a family dance, which was a huge success and we hope to offer more parent engagement events next year. We just had our Scholastic VOGO Book Fair and we also had Teacher Appreciation Week as well. We raised a total of $3,914.80. Some of the money that we did raise was through Original Works, which goes to an art fund directly for our art teacher to help offset some maybe extra things she wants to do with the kids. We spent $2,370 on Turkey Trot. We did a monthly staff appreciation this year. We also did Teacher Appreciation Week, Dyno Man, MCAS snacks. We did a community readers' night, aloha dance, a graduation step up. We also participated in some district things like the parade and the cardboard challenge. And we also just offered general support to our staff and students. We had fourth grade step up today and we have kindergarten step up tomorrow. Our field day, even though we did not have a gym teacher, our staff did an amazing job executing that and we had 20 volunteers from NHS come over with Tara. And it was really a truly community GPS field day. We've already started to work with Ms. Jacobs to plan our 25, 26 school year. We're hoping to try and get some field trips earlier in the school year and some events in the year. Quick notes, bringing back after-school PTO events. This was the first year we have had any after-school PTO-funded events since pre-COVID, so about five years. We did a lot of community projects with other PTOs and I think our PTOs within districts started building really great relationships and getting out in community more. And I think you'll see that reflected in some of the other reports. This year, we did a monthly teacher appreciation and many items were donated by local restaurants. And we really enjoyed providing this for the teachers and staff and we hope to continue to build community with them as well.
Okay. Discovery School at Four Corners. This was presented by Deka Diefendorf. They highlighted that they had a PTO Presents with Jason Tardy, which was an anti-bullying program using juggling, et cetera, for engagement. PTO Presents is like they bring educational enrichment into the school day. And then they had a plant sale for Mother's Day weekend and completely sold out of 75 plants. This one differs from the others in that it's only reporting financials from the past month, but they raised $825 from that plant sale and they spent $850 on the Jason Tardy event, which is much cheaper than ours. The upcoming, they have Field Day, School Fair with treats sponsored by the PTO and the Scholastic Book Fair, although I think some of those may have recently happened. Their quick note was that teachers expressed gratitude for celebrating them during Teacher Appreciation Week and their luncheon at Four Corners. The PTO puts on a, like get guys lunch for all the teachers once a year. All right. Federal Street, presented by Sarah Marhefka. Highlights are, she really highlighted community building. They're in the process of building, of purchasing a sandbox to enhance the playground and make it more of a community center. They're talking about monthly playground gatherings next year to bring community, maybe with a catered food truck once a month and snacks other months, or one month and snacks other months. They're talking about a Federal Street PTO, oh, they're talking about applying for grants because they have a 501(c)(3), which none of the other schools have. So, they're planning to, talking about using that to try to raise money through grants instead of doing fundraisers, since much of what we do is spending our energy on fundraisers to pay for the things we pay for. And then the Pride Parade, we all together as PTOs paid for t-shirts for the Pride Parade for kids and teachers, anybody who wanted them at the schools. But Sarah really took the spearhead at that.
I'm going to interrupt Andrea just to exit off the 501(c)(3). See, she's talking about it like for all the PTOs to utilize Federal Street's grant, not just Federal Street to apply for grants, us as a whole, AEL, GMS, Newton and Four Corners.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
No, no, thank you, thank you.
Like I want you to think it was just for them.
Well, she said maybe we can pilot this.
Yeah, that's the hope.
Yeah, but you're right, okay. Yeah, I misread, okay. And so they raised a total of $5,117.70 this year and they spent $6,562.57. And I think you can all see what that was on. They, coming up at the end of your party, which is tonight, which is why they are not here. And then she wanted to note the importance of community building. So, again, that we've grown together, been growing together as PTOs, working together, which she called out Ruthie McDonald, who is at the high, high school now?
Yeah.
Yeah. But she really started our calendar fundraiser that was across all the PTOs. And she said, points out that we are, it, sorry, it was hard at times that we think very important to our school community. We're sharing ideas, resources and joining together. The Pride Parade was an example of that. Small things like having coffee after all school meetings seems to help folks join in community with each other. Sarah's really been leading a lot of that now too. I'll, I'll call her out. She has a lot of great ideas. Okay, moving on to the middle school. We have, for our second ti, second year in a row, we did Petty Wars as a fundraiser that was really a lot of fun for the students and then also raises a surprising amount of money, $1,733. The motivation is that the students who, the class who wins gets to decide, we donate half of that to a place of their choosing. So, they get to decide who that goes to. And it was Stone Soup Cafe. We're going to be writing them a check next week, I think, and then trying to get that in the newspaper so that we.
I think it happened. I think it happened today.
Oh, today? Yes, that's right, that's right.
Sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
It happened today.
It was next week when I last heard about it, yeah.
Row, one of the teachers at GMS actually volunteers there, teacher Skirloff, and they helped make the connection to have it today.
Yeah, so hopefully we'll get some, some press there too, just to let people know that we're doing good things. And then we, and then that, that class also gets to decide how the money is spent. And this year it was spent, I don't think it was their first choice, but they didn't get, they wanted a bounce house, which we couldn't do. So, we ended up giving them cookies and ice cream for dessert one day. So, they, we as a PTO continued helping out the school events. The school does a great job of having these events after school, so they really run them. But there's the bike rodeo, the dances and trivia nights that the staff really puts on, but we put money towards some of the things that go on, like the food and stuff like that. Scholastic Book Fair, as we, we use the funds that we get from the Scholastic Book Fairs to buy books for the students. Not all the students, but, but a good amount of the students every year. So, we raised $3,944 this year. We spent $2,039. We have $12,000 about in our bank account. So, skipping down to my quick note, we're thinking of, well, actually I'll go to coming up because we have a couple of things that are earmarked for very early next year. One is the BMX bike anti-bullying event. That's relatively expensive, but we want to do it early in the year to, to push the anti-bullying early on and then buying t-shirts for all the students to give them some, you know, school spirit. So, both of those are relatively big ticket items. But my quick note is that we, we, we make more than we spend. So, we're really thinking about for next year, either just not doing as many fundraisers and putting our efforts towards community events, building community. And, and we're also trying to think about ways to spend off that money. I think a lot of it comes out of COVID and you see in a lot of these notes that people had some extra money from COVID, I think, because we just didn't have events, so there wasn't much to spend it on. So, we're, we're gonna, we don't want to take money out of our community that we can't spend. So, that's it.
Thank you very much. You open to questions from the committee?
Sure.
Yeah.
Questions for the PTO reps? Member Denis?
Mostly I just want to say something really quick because I'm so giddy with excitement that we're having a PTO report because it literally took a full election in order to have the space and the support to have you come here and tell us about all of the good work that you've been doing. So, I'm just so excited to hear about it and to get to create more of a relationship with you from the school committee to the PTO because you are so important to, to student achievement. And I just really want to thank Karen for also supporting that relationship. And that's why it's so important to have such a fine superintendent who supports us so that we can do these things because it literally took two years to get you all to be able to come in and give a report. So, I guess I do have a question. An end of the year report is great. Is that all that you would like to do as a PTO or would you like to come in and speak to us every six months or something like that? Do you feel like this is a great way to give us your report or?
I feel like the report we gave you was like very brief. Like this is just a clip, I would say, from like a month to two months of what we've really accomplished, like throughout the whole. And there's so many like little things along the way that we, we do that sometimes doesn't always go noticed by anyone.
Yeah, I mean, I think we had talked about maybe three times a year or something like that, maybe not every meeting, but, but on a regular cadence so that, so you guys are, so we developed that relationship, yeah.
Would there be interest in the Community Engagement Subcommittee contacting you and maybe you can come and speak with us because we're trying to figure out how to engage also with the community? So, all of, knowing about all of the events is really important because we're creating a calendar.
Sure. Definitely.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Member Sexton?
Yeah, I think Elizabeth took my actual questions, but I did just want to note that my quick math says that you all raised over $20,000 for our community. And I just want to like note that that is a significant amount of money.
There are possibly more than that.
Well, no, that's, I was sort of including a rounded up figure for Discovery School, noting that that was just for the past month. But, so it's probably well over $20,000. And that, that is money that clearly our schools need because you are doing important work of community building and providing these sort of after-school or even in-school resources and events and activities for our kids that we otherwise would absorb in our normal budget. So, I can't speak to that enough about how much we appreciate you stepping up again because you pay for us with your taxes, but you're also paying for us in this way as well. So, just want to call that out and note it. Thank you and hope the rest of the community thanks you as well for being able to do this for our kids.
Thank you. You're welcome and thank you.
Member Childs?
Again, not a question, but a comment. I'd like to commend all of the community building, especially when all the PTOs have been joining together, even just some of them teaming up. And I'm excited about that and I hope that is something that continues to be explored and brought bigger and bigger.
Yeah, the calendar fundraiser is where we've done most of that and that, it was $2,000 per school, right? So, it was like $10,000?
This year.
This year, yeah, just alone, so, yeah.
That's, I think that's where it started, a little back pre-COVID, I think, is when Ruthie started it. And then, I think, I, I mean, I'm at all the schools, so I was like, you know, feeling like, okay, I'm on GMS and we're doing AEL and I'm here. And then Sarah really just took it over and was like, we had talked last year, we're like, we're gonna, we were too late for the Pride Parade last year and that's where the, it started. And then we did the parade for the fair, which was a lot, a lot of fun. We were actually at my house and I really enjoyed it. And people would just like show up whenever and like work on stuff. We had this little outdoor tent that was a lot of fun. It was a lot of fun just building it with everyone. And everyone had different skills and everyone came together. And then we did.
Light up the fairgrounds.
Light up the fairgrounds and that was like another way that everyone came together and we put it out there. And I mean, I'm just going to repeat what everyone said. Karen has been super helpful, especially at the beginning of the year. She got us all together on Zoom. I was in a hotel room, Andrea was somewhere else. We all, none of us were where we were like, you know, able to be in person. But we all kind of got together and gave the superintendent the rundown of what we were hoping to accomplish for the year, a little list of things, so. But it's been a lot of fun just having that community engagement. And we actually have a group chat that we've now moved, I think, to remind possibly who we're on the WhatsApp. And we kind of just check in with each other there, even just monthly, like, oh, I'm doing this event. Our Federal Street's done what's called a boohoo breakfast and we're gonna, we're gonna try it this year at Newton after kindergarten drop-off. So, it's really nice to also check in with other people so that way we are, I don't want to be like doing the same things, but like use, utilizing each other's resources instead of trying to just be like, this is really draining.
I just want to thank you because without PTOs sticking together, I know that people were dropping out right and left. And I think you have strength in numbers and that's a great thing. Without PTOs and that collaboration, everything from the playgrounds, and the kids appreciate everything you do. I was talking to some 11th graders today and everything they remember about elementary school has to do with a PTO event, from Field Day to falling off the monkey bars and getting a new playground.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mayor?
I just want to say thank you too. This is wonderful to hear. And is that boohoo breakfast? Is that after people drop their?
We've never done it at Newton before and I think it's Federal Street's second year doing it was this past year. And we, we were just talking, like when we were doing the float build, it was, it was many weekends. It was like four weekends for like four hours and then during the day too. So, we all were just chatting about it and that's how we heard about it was, they're like, oh, we do the boohoo breakfast and, you know, it was neat.
Great idea. Thank you, thank you so much.
It wasn't us, it was, it wasn't me, it was Federal Street.
Well, I'll echo everyone's appreciation so much and really glad that you're here and look forward to having you back sometime early in the fall. Be wonderful to have you back and hear about your plans for the year ahead. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to reports of the administration, business manager.
Good evening. You have the first of, we'll be doing another June report as the year officially closes, but this is the report for June. As you see, we're again in our normal process. We start with our, the deficit, I say deficit in quotes, and then applying the other expenditures that we anticipate having to expend, in particular, the special education maintenance of effort to get us down to how it is that we will balance the budget. Couple of things just to highlight, like I say in the memo, to bring your attention to Circuit Breaker in particular, as I've been reporting through the year. We charge that, actually two times a year, we do a mid-year and then we've done the final charge. So, I know that has been brought up repeatedly as to an account that had a balance in it. As you can see, we just have under $1.4 million committed and charged to it. One of the other things on the revolving account report that came in after the fact that I just want to share, I was a little concerned when you look at the food service balance of only $170,000. There is $395,519.86 of unposted revenues that are yet to be posted by the city. So, when that gets posted, it gets it back up to the healthy amount that we're normally used to seeing. So, I don't know if anyone else was alarmed by that, but I'll admit I was. So, there's that. We have, you know, the final reconciliation as to, as of right now, how we're going to see things go. We are constantly reviewing purchase orders. We have year-end expenditures coming in. We are reducing purchase orders as a process for purchase orders that were done that are no longer needed. So, the ebbs and flows will continue on in accordance with the schedule that the city sent as the closing out of FY '25. So, that's a summary for the report. I do feel I need to address something that I've heard. And similar to, you know, like Member Goodwood and the mayor, I'm a math person, you know, the mayor numbers don't lie and so we all deal in facts and everything. And so, I heard a comment about concerns of embezzlement of funds in the schools. So, as somebody who's advising administration and you as a school committee regarding how it is that you manage your budgets, you know, that's of a concern to me when I hear rumors like that. As much as we don't like to address rumors, I do feel something of that level of severity needs to be addressed. So, you know, I was thinking about how best to see as far as the management of what it is the school has done regarding its operations. We get audited every year as a part of the city audit. You know, we are a city department, so we are audited. And so, the past two years, management has done what has always been done regarding their financial operations. And, and as a testament to the city as a whole, I'll say, the independent auditors, if they find any issues or challenges or questions or concerns, they issue what's called a management letter. The city of Greenfield has not in the past two years received a management letter of concern regarding the financial operations of the city as a whole, including the schools. So, that needs to be said, that, you know, rumors of embezzlement, I know they're rumors, but that's something that we need to nip right in the bud regarding that. And the past traction, based on at least two years, shows that there's been no management letter citations from the independent auditor related to the school management or even the city as a whole. So, that's a testament to the people you have in key positions running not only the school, but the other city departments. So, I just felt the need that I had to say that. So, that being said, I'll take any questions you might have regarding your reports.
Questions for the business manager? Member Sexton?
I was wondering if you could share what the balances in these two named revolving accounts will be after these funding, after the funding sources are actually used.
I can give you an estimate because we still have their final, we have some tuitions for sped tuition that hasn't been posted and there's still some outstanding receivables that we'll be receiving. For example, in, in addition to $395, there's $16,288.48 of sped tuitions that haven't been posted yet. School Choice has $25,453 that hasn't been posted yet. So, if we were to take a look and see the revolving account balance report and looking at, let's just say, I'm, I'm doing this back of the envelope as much as, again, I'm a numbers person, but when we're looking at the ending balance in School Choice as of right now of the 903, 839, we reduce that by the 50,000, 951.
850-ish.
Yeah. And then we'll add to it the 25 plus the June payments, you know, so that gets us, you know, back up another, you know, 30 or 40 grand, we'll say. But again, we do have, like, there are encumbrances that are not showing that will increase the use of that School Choice. But then again, as I said earlier, when we are canceling purchase orders, that is going to increase the balance available as well. So, we're talking in the ballpark, I would say, of that amount. The sped tuition revolving account, again, doing the same exercise, if you look at the balance of that sped tuition revolving account, it is 1,014,000. We're cutting that in half by the 703,000 that we are going to charge to it. That leaves us 700,000 and change plus the 16,000. That leaves us seven hundred thousand and change, plus the sixteen grand and any other outstanding receivables that would be in, added to that come June thirtieth.
Other questions? Member Goodwin?
Can you tell me what the three thousand dollars for marketing is for? That goes to TMS?
That's communications work and support that the, we do with the superintendent.
Uh, one of the survey results from families was to actually engage via social media. So they monitor our social media accounts. They assist with all of our newsletters on smores. They do our messaging. So uh, if we had this morning, a, a situation at the middle school. So they help out with that instant messaging so we can let families know what's happening in an instant. Um, they do any posts like for our softball team, if you didn't see our post today on Facebook and the tickets that you can purchase to go watch the girls tomorrow. So it's really just monitoring social media because we don't have the capacity to really take on that and then helping with communication and marketing of all the things that the schools are doing.
Do they do our Facebook or, or?
Our Facebook, our Instagram, um, they do all of, they work in conjunction with our IT department because some of the login has to go through our schools, which they don't have access to, but they do assist.
Other questions? Mayor?
I have a question about, um, some of the encumbrances. On page five, um, athletic, athletic referees. We budgeted fifty-two thousand and we have sixty-seven thousand encumbered. Um, it looks like we've prepaid or budgeted forty thousand for Arbiter LLC. Is that for?
That's for paying the referees and the coaches. So, not, not the coaches, referees. So the referees for the officials. It goes through this system. So we create a balance for that so that it's used for end of the year and any balance that gets carried over will used in subsequent years as well.
I missed that. Could you go over that more slowly?
So, uh, the way that referees and officials get paid is through this arbiter sport system. It's, it expedites and makes it more efficient as far as so that they're not getting individual checks cut from us. We it's almost like the equivalent of a postage machine, you know, you put the balance in there and then they submit it, gets approved by us and then it gets through the arbiter system that it gets paid. So we put in base, to help out Coach K, uh, regarding the, uh, what it is that he's projecting to pay for the coaches, I keep saying coaches, referees through the year. And then if there's availability to help out for subsequent years, based on things that could happen, for example, it creates balances for with, indeed, which has happened, I almost believe yearly. Uh, referees and officials get their increase in the rates that we have to pay them. So we end up, you know, it, it's good budget practice to have the balance to cover any of those unanticipated needs for referees.
So follow up by Kim, but so we budgeted for fifty-two thousand and, um, it, we're just about, you know, we're done with the, um, paying the referees for this year so that the encumbrance or the payment just for the forty thousand was just put on in June. That's for next year?
It's, uh, next year, but I also need to see because I believe that also includes, because that's a, is that the contract? Let me, I'm just trying to find it and of course I had it up and my computer went to sleep. So I can get you the detail, but let me see if I can just double check one thing while we're talking.
I just, I saw the last couple of years that was about what we spent or less. So we've encumbered a lot that would make a difference going into next year. And I had a couple, I'll go on, but I'll let you look for that one first.
Yeah, I'm gonna need to re-log into Munis because it kicked me out. So
I couldn't get in now either, but I
If you go to your next question and I'll
Yeah, I was on, they were supply, the supply lines um, that have actually increased, these increased from, from May to June. And we're at the end of the year. So I'll just say them, line one, three. This is on page six. Um, in the, in the first grouping, about, uh, a little more than halfway down instructional supplies. And we've got encumbered two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred. And, um, on the next page, um, again, a little bit more than halfway down instructional supplies is encumbered a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy. Some of the POs were actually just opened the end of the May or June, or early June. And then sped technology and encumbrance for a hundred and twenty-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. And I just wish that we would be like, think about revisiting a next year account where, where if we have something that's, that, that is left that we could put it in the next year account to discount whatever expenses we'd be having because it's kind of a lot of encumbrances.
So first I'll deal with the sped one because I know that sped one is, that has to go towards meeting the maintenance of efforts. So that's non-negotiable. If we don't spend those expenditures in special education, we are in risk of losing our entitlement grants for special education. So that's what that, that bullet in the summary is for. So you're gonna see, with all due respect, you're gonna see another three hundred and thirty-some odd thousand dollars of expenses that Mr. Messing is gonna put through because if we don't do that, we, exactly. You know, so, you know, that, I would say that, but the other things I'll say with all, it's normal year-end process where we go to the administrators and say, if we've got the availability, you know, I remember Goodman shaking her head when she was a principal, we would do the same thing as to what is it you have for supplies to help out for subsequent years. It has allowed us to do these things and also potentially as far as if there's need be for other unanticipated expenses. Um, potentially negotiations and things of that nature. So, and I do remember, Your Honor, you said at the city council meeting beforehand that what was just happened regarding the public hearing on the budget. I believe the exact quote was, if you have funds available, of course you save it. This is what we're doing. We're doing exactly what is that you're recommending.
Thank you.
Member Goodwin?
I just have a question about under middle school on page four. There's these big transfers and the math hit me in the face as a math teacher. It's a GMS faculty math and then it, like, two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars adjustment. Did we do away with some math teachers?
If you look and see down, down below, this was the exercise.
I'm starting to worry.
If you remember the workshop that we did where we talked about our chart of accounts is not in a line with the DESI function codes.
Okay.
So this is, if you look and see down below, there's a plus six hundred, eight thousand dollars to six hundred twenty-seven. So we are, we are combining and collapsing because when time comes for reporting purposes, whether it's math or English or science.
It's all one account.
Regular education. Correct.
And would the, that also explain the, um, what was the other one? I think it said like integrated arts.
Yes, exactly.
Same thing, they would still be teaching staff.
Yes.
So P, art, music.
Those are all regular education. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? I have one question. Do you think it'd be possible going forward to include on the business manager's kind of calendar to report to the school committee when the audits are done? Just, is that I mean, just like you did tonight, but when, when the audit report?
Oh, sure. I mean, we're, uh, we don't get, they usually conduct an exit interview with city officials, I'm imagining. We're not involved in that, but um, the normal process is when, if there's a management letter finding that is related to a department, I would like to think, and again, it's a testament to the city that it has never happened, at least since we've been here. Um, that if it was a school-related management letter finding, they would ask, management always has a chance to respond to a management letter finding. So we would be able to respond if there was one. Um, but yes, obviously, I can always stay in contact with the finance director as far as when the audit is complete. Uh, whether or not you want to read through the audited financial statements of the city, or if you wanted to see if there's anything school-related, we could, we could do both. You know, so.
Even just a sentence or two in the business manager's report that, you know, the audit came back and there were no, there was no management letter or whatever it is.
Sure.
That'd be great. Thank you. All right, we'll move on. Thank you very much, Andy. So the assistant superintendent.
Good evening. Um, I just have a couple of things tonight, uh, grants update. I mentioned a couple of months ago that we received thirty-five, a thirty-five thousand dollar equipment grant for the advanced manufacturing career pathway that we are working to implement. Um, just wanted to provide an update. We are, we are spending down that grant. That is due to be, to come off our books at the end of June. Um, and we're making investments in computer-controlled, um, milling machines, manually operated milling machines, three D printers, screen printing machines, um, embroidering, all those things related, um, to the career pathway. It's important to us that, as I've said before, the career pathway is intended to be a broad look at an industry spec- sector, which is a little different than a chapter seventy-four, which may start to narrow a focus. So we feel like the equipment and materials that we're purchasing through this grant will provide students opportunities to use different tools, gain different skills that we anticipate them being more marketable. Um, be it if they're pursuing post-secondary education or a career right out of, out of school. The other thing that's connected to the innovation career pathway is part of it is that they'd have a hundred hour internship or capstone project at the end. So we hope that as they make relationships with industry partners in the region, that they have a connection to a network that um, might be able to offer them employment, be it full-time or in summer and breaks when they come home. Also, um, it was announced last week that we received the civics grant once again. And this grant is focused on support for the grade eight and high school civics projects. Um, so we'll be working with the history teachers at GHS to identify opportunities to incorporate this. I, I think they started a conversation with Superintendent Patnold last year about this. They're doing the work, but how can we maybe find other ways outside of the history class, so we're not taking from that curriculum to still offer this civic engagement? So we'll look forward to having that conversation with the teachers and, um, working through this grant. The end of year benchmark assessment, so it started last week. We're getting to the end. There's some data showing up in our spreadsheet, so that I keep watching for. And, um, we've made some really nice growth in places. We've thrown a lot at teachers and students this year and, um, I think Ms. Rancourt said earlier that we might not always agree with what, with the way that it is going, but we're doing the work and we certainly see that and we appreciate the teachers for being willing to take on so much new. And um, we are thoughtful about saying like, we don't want to just keep piling on. We don't want to keep piling on, but we see these opportunities. And because our teachers have shown a willingness to take on, take that on, it's like, okay, they can handle it. And we're saying a lot of these things have been optional, but teachers haven't taken them so much as optional. They learn about it, they dive into it, they get the data submitted. They're looking at it, they're using it. Um, so appreciate their growth this year and, um, just want to note that under the superintendent's leadership, we've made significant investments in high-quality instructional materials and resources to support interventions, not just the core curriculum. Um, but especially for our elementary students and staff. Um, really looking at phonemic awareness and phonics and getting into some of those discrete, discrete skills. Um, and I think myself and some of the teachers had these aha moments like, oh, we've been working so hard on this, but this struggle, this student struggles with phoneme segmentation or rhyming. Like, that hadn't crossed my mind. And then they're doing some work on it and students are showing growth um, pretty quickly once they're able to target those things. So really excited to see the end of the year benchmark data and some of this stuff, the core and passes, stuff that we just started in February, I, I think. So, um, we haven't had a long time with it this current year. And then we're looking ahead to next year already. And I probably could have mentioned this in a, a March or April report, we start talking about the next year. But we have our administrative retreat, um, July first and second to review successes that we've had this year, challenges. Look at the data and identify goals and priorities for next year. And that's also part of our instructional prioritization planning that we're doing in partnership with, um, our DESI statewide system of support partners. So.
Thank you. Superintendent?
Good evening. Um, you do have just a quick report for me with the updated enrollment numbers for June. Uh, the majority of my report though, however, is going to be the DESI district site review. Uh, we have our final report for the district.
Then let me just get questions for the assistant superintendent, if there are any, before you do that.
Sure.
Big piece. So any questions for the assistant superintendent? Member Goodwin?
And this may be both of these reports? Is what kind of, I don't know if the word is commitment or oversight do we have by the SOS folks?
It's a fair question. It doesn't feel like oversight. It feels like we're collaborating in this work.
Good.
We're having mid-year and end of year data reviews and check-ins and such with them, but I personally haven't felt like they're coming through and digging and looking for problems. We're looking at the data together. Oftentimes we're seeing some of the same issues and challenges and then working together with, to identify potential solutions. And I think what they are able to bring is Greenfield's not the only district that they're working in. So they're able to identify successes other districts have had or challenges other districts have had. And, you know, then it's really up to us and our team to say like, how could that or would that work in Greenfield?
So you feel like they're functioning more as coaches than?
I would say partners even, and maybe their role is intended to be more of coaches, but it does feel like they're on our team. They want us to succeed. They, I think they like being in Greenfield when they come and work with us, but
Okay.
Their job is to work themselves out of Greenfield.
That would be nice. Okay, thank you.
Of course.
I do want to add too, though, that they don't just come to, uh, district leadership. They've participated in walkthroughs in all of our buildings. So they've been in our classrooms. They've been watching our teachers and um, we reflect back on that as well. So they're part of the culture as well. They're not just looking at us on paper. And certainly know what's happening in our buildings and are able to reflect with us after they participate in those walkthroughs, which has been really good.
Yes, Member Sexton?
Um, I just wanted to say thank you to Assistant Superintendent Stephen Sullivan and also Superintendent Karen Patnold for really continuing to pursue a lot of these grants that add a lot of value to our students' um, education and their curriculum. And I'm really excited about this equipment grant because that, from my understanding, is an unusual uh, kind of money to get, that you don't get to buy stuff usually, you just get to buy people's time. Um, and if you are a local business, an employer, a hopeful employer or somebody and you are learning for the first time that we are getting some of those machines and that excites you, please reach out to our administrators to get connected for you and the ether who are out there. Um, I just, yeah, I'm really looking forward to the ways that this can add, add value to our students' learning, but also really strengthen ties with our community overall by getting more of our kids out there. Doing stuff, showing what they can do and showing what they've learned as part of being Greenfield.
Other questions or comments? I saw in Senator Comerford's newsletter today, a fifty thousand dollar earmark came through for us. Is that?
What?
You, you, I saw it in the newsletter, so I think it's real. And, um, I don't know if we can or if we had designated that for something in specific, but maybe if that's public, we can.
Um, Natalie Blay and Joe Comerford had both reached out to us, so I'll have to connect with them tomorrow to see which one that actually was. We had to
We had to designate two potentials, so I'm not sure which one that is, and we'll, we'll connect tomorrow. That's great news.
Stay tuned for some good news. We could all use it right now. Yes, well done, people. That was a good team effort between the administration and the school committee and the legislators. So thanks to everyone involved. Now for your report, your presentation.
Okay, so if you recall, just to put a little time perspective in this, Greenfield was chosen for a DESI district site review, and they were on our campus in November. So just keep that in, in the back of your mind as you hear some of this. And then we'll also address some of the stuff that we've been doing all year that actually assisted with a lot of their findings and their recommendations. So I'll give you a brief intro, a little background on what they actually entail, what happened with our review, and then some of the next steps that we are going to proceed with. So I won't read it verbatim. You do have in your packet all of this, but they are conducted each year. They pick about twenty schools. We were the lucky chosen ones this year. And they do it in partnership with what is called American Institute for Research. So the people that run the actual site review are not DESI folks, but they collaborate with AIR and compile all the data after they do all the interviews and all the site visits and whatnot. And then they spit out the report for us. We do get a draft review so that we can look at factual inconsistencies and report back. And then once the factual timeline is over, they do issue the real report. They do, however, suggest you do an internal digestion of it, which we did with our faculty and staff and our leadership team before it actually gets presented to all of you. And then tomorrow, I have a school messenger going out to all of our families that has a link to the whole report. I do believe the report's like a hundred and twenty-six pages long, so I'll be giving you the short version this evening. They chose Greenfield. There are targeted reviews where they only look at some indicators or full reviews. And we were so lucky, we got the full review. So they reviewed us on all of the district standards and indicators. So they're listed here. The full report goes into much more detail and depth about each of these and what their findings, commendations, and recommendations were. But they do, there's a link in this PowerPoint, which is online, and you can read all about the, the district standards and indicators. So when we got notification, Dr. Barge received that in May of last year. And then I took over on July one and worked with DESI to get the site visit here. They were on our campus from November eighteenth to the twenty-second. And then in April of 2025 is where we got the draft one to review for factual errors. The six begins, the six standards and indicators begins with leadership and governance. There are much more in-depth, but I highlighted a few of them that actually align with a lot of the work that we've been doing. So they show you some strengths and then they give you areas for growth. And then you can look at, there's more standards and indicators that actually are in the actual report. The two that I wanted to just highlight, though, is really our leadership team structure, the internal leadership team, the ILTs at each building level that have led some of the work in the buildings have just really been a strength this year, and we've really come a long way with that work, and we were recognized for that. And I really just want to commend our building leaders and the ILT members at the buildings for all the work they've done. The area for growth is really getting our independent school councils at each building really up and running on a regular basis, reporting out and aligning the work of our community and family members with the work that we're doing internally. And we knew that was an area for growth, and it's on our list of next steps to really try to improve for next year. With regards to strategic planning, implementation, and monitoring, we were noted for having strength with redistricting for addressing our equity issues and using progress monitoring data to inform adjustments in our instruction. The other area for growth that aligns with our school councils, though, is having those individualized school improvement plans that align with the district's plan. And then really sharing out our progress monitoring more often with teachers and community stakeholders. So we have that on our list of things to do at the leadership team retreat in July and how we can actually be a bigger presence on that. For curriculum and instruction, equitable practice and access, we were identified as having a strength in an array of academic interventions for all grade levels, which we were happy to hear. We do really need to improve, though, in some areas where addressing staff barriers, where they could actually address SST meetings and meet student needs. And then really our subgroup populations that we've been talking about all year, ensuring our students with disabilities and our EL learners have access to the supports they need. We know that is something that we need to work on because we also had a tiered focus monitoring review from DESI for our Ls, and we had a coordinated program review for our special ed program. So that was not a surprise to us. With effective instruction and implementation, our instructional strategy work was noted, and I really want to commend the teachers that it's been a two-year process, and they have really been putting their heart and soul into those instructional strategies and working to improve engagement with our students. Some of the areas for growth were our SEL and our behavior management systems and really working on that collaboration time that teachers have and having it be a little more effective in the use and implementation of that time. For the assessment category, one of the strengths was the data collection that we have started. Our partnership with Open Architect is really useful in that area. And then we use that disaggregated student data to inform the decision planning that we make, which is always embraced. I think the area for growth that we're all aware of is diving deeper into the data. What does that data say? What do, what does it say about the students sitting in front of us? And how do we change our instruction to improve the work that we're doing? Human resources and professional development. I don't think it was a surprise that we have a need for an improved human resource infrastructure. I am at the HR department, so it is definitely an interesting set of systems going on at Central Office. The Business Office helps out a tremendous amount, but really establishing some systems and improving accessibility of our human resource policies and procedures certainly does need to happen. In our professional learning, they noted us as having a strength in our PD opportunities and the walkthrough process that we aligned this year. So I, I was happy to hear that because that really has been something the leadership team has embraced. And then areas for growth is really, we've talked about this a lot as building leaders, giving teachers that bite-sized, actionable feedback so that you're not overwhelming them with so many things that may need to change, but just little pieces or little tweaks that can happen to really have an impact on instruction and learning. And then allowing teachers to choose differentiated or specialized PD opportunities. We get a lot of feedback from our staff on that, which I don't think was a surprise to any of us. Student support section, they noted that we have a strength in resources for addressing students' social and emotional needs and mental health needs. I think the district is really strong in having counselors, accessible adjustment counselors, guidance counselors available for our students. I think an area of growth was that consistent behavioral support systems. We've talked a lot about that, having that be district-wide so that students don't have to relearn certain systems or protocols or procedures as they go through our system. And then creating an opportunity for all students to exercise voice and leadership, something that's near and dear to my heart, and I'm happy that there has been some improvement in that over the course of the year from November with our Sustainability Club at the high school, our Students of Color Club, and they've really been leaders in exercising student voice. So I hope that continues and grows in the coming years. Family and community partnerships, we certainly have a lot of strong partnerships with community organizations. I think that our area of growth is really having that universal consistency with family communication. You know, I think as families realize, sometimes you may have a teacher that overcommunicates or communicates a lot, and then you have a teacher that communicates maybe once a week and you want more. So just really figuring out what that communication looks like in some consistent manner. And then Dave Messing's office has really done a nice job this year of this piece of growth from November that we have improved tremendously in offering all of our things in multiple languages. And then lastly, the category of financial and asset management, they, and remember this, is from November, the Business Office, they had a strength that everyone is qualified individual, that our district effectively applies for state and federal grants, that we establish process for purchasing supplies and service, and we comply with state laws and have effective contract management. We have systems in place to track the inventory. And we collaborate with the city on capital projects. The area for growth that we've seen is that funding for key instructional resources and support roles and providing user-friendly budget documents. But I think Andy's done a great job this year in trying to improve upon that for you based on your own feedback with that. And then obviously maintaining and repairing aging buildings. They were in all of our buildings, so certainly we're aware of what is happening in most of those areas. So with all of that, I know there's a lot of information, and there certainly is a hundred and twenty-six-page report you can read at your leisure some other time. But some of the next steps that we have already been planning for, for next year was continuing to provide our administrative team and our teacher the training they need to really dive deeper into that student data. Until we know what those students know and don't know in front of us and how it informs our instructional choices, we're not going to be able to target the interventions that they need. Principals already have on their task list to really collaborate and get those school councils up and running to create those school improvement plans that align with the district's goals. We have started the investment already in the high-quality instructional materials for Ls, and then we want to provide our administrators and teachers with the support from the WE to look for us to support those L learners. And then provide administrators and teachers support in developing increased inclusive opportunities for special ed students, which we know is a focus that we need to continue. And those strong tiered intervention supports for elementary and middle so that we can also address not only the behaviors, but the interventions that we need to make sure that our kids are reading at grade level and learning as they should. So I am happy to take questions on that before we go to the budget, or I can certainly go to the budget, and you can take all questions after both.
Let's pause for questions now, Member Childs.
Okay, I have two questions. First one, quick, the curriculum and instruction SSTs, can you define that for anyone watching at home?
Student support teams, my apologies.
I just figured that would be a good one for. And then the other one, the HR, I wanted to know if you had any recommendations based on your hands-on experience for what Greenfield should be doing to improve? How can we make the areas for growth happen? If you have any ideas that you're willing to share?
I, I don't know if I have any right now, and I'm certainly happy to digest that and think of some, but I'm an educator, you know? I went to school to be a teacher. I have my admin CAGs, like, everything I know and do is around education. And the amount of questions I field about FMLA or, like, sometimes it's just, you know, it's not my wheelhouse. So to have to have a lot of that HR hat, too, I really just think the, the district would benefit from, even if it's just a part-time person or something of that nature, to collaborate with because a lot of things come up that are just not an educator's cap. But I'm certainly open to thinking about how we can get there. Andy and the Business Office do a great job of collaborating, and we are often in conversations with the City Hall and asking questions and trying to collaborate there. But it definitely is time-consuming and, you know, detracts from the work that really should be being done versus what needs to be done to handle HR matters.
Other questions? Member Sexton?
Sort of in a similar vein, I was sort of wondering sort of where you see the school committee's role in supporting some of this happening and if there's anything more that we can be doing to help make some of this happen? And I specifically wanted to ask about the school improvement plans and wondering, obviously, unfortunately, you won't be here for it when they're final, but I'm hoping or asking if they can be reported to us in some way as well so we can have some more insight in the building-specific stuff.
Sure. I mean, obviously, the supporting building leaders and faculty and staff and the work that they're doing is always welcome. I think with the school improvement plans, making sure those school councils are up and running in September, and, you know, we usually have the elections on the night of meet and greet because parents do have to be elected to school councils. And there's certain ratios under the guidelines that you can only have so many parents versus so many community members. So I think just really, I'm advocating to whoever's watching, if you are a parent that wants to get involved, it's a great way to actually sit with your principal, with a teacher, and with community members and really be a leading voice in what's going to happen in your schools for your children. So it's definitely a place where you would have a voice. I think it's really just important that the alignment of what the district needs based on this report is also trickled down into those school improvement plans. And I know a lot of times in the past, even when I was a principal, that they were very disjointed from what the district was doing versus what we wanted to do as a school in our school improvement plan. So I think really being up to speed on what is happening in districts so that that alignment happens through every channel of involvement is really important to keep the work going.
Other questions? I guess my question is, it seemed like one of the recommendation was, don't overwhelm teachers with all of these recommendations all the time, but give them in kind of bite-sized, like, quantities. But then they come and give a report that's like this thick with recommendations. So I see that you have kind of, I don't know, did you write these next steps or did these come from the report?
We digested the report and we picked the next steps. When you look at this report, there's probably three hundred next steps that they've recommended, and it's just not possible. So, you know, we also realize the amount that we can take on that's actually going to have positive effect on student growth and achievement. So there are so many other things in the report that they would love to see the district do, but there's only so much capacity for a lot of this work. And our next steps really have to be focused on our students. And the HR stuff, that's fine, like, we can figure that out. Like, I would rather take next steps that are actually going to directly impact student growth and achievement. And that's why we picked these, so that if our focus is going to be on anything, it's going to be on what's going to matter most to them.
Great, thank you. And, you know, going forward, whoever's listening out there, if you, any support the school committee can offer in terms of making these changes and narrowing the focus to what's actionable and, like you're saying, what's going to impact student achievement, we're happy to help with. Thank you. What's up next?
Okay, next is, sorry, one more slide I have to find. This toolbar keeps getting in my way, my apologies. Okay, so one of the things that we wanted to share with you tonight is, sorry, Zoom bar keeps getting in my way. I wanted to remind everyone that we do have collective bargaining agreements. So I know along the course of the budget development and the budget cuts and conversations that happened, everyone's wanting to know, well, who are you cutting? And we really have some constraints with collective bargaining agreements on letting folks know when they are going to either be not folks know when they are going to either be non-renewed or their position is going to be cut. So I just wanted to reiterate that because I think a lot of folks wanted to know that early on, and that is just not what the collective bargaining agreement aligns with. So I was just going to go through how we got to the cuts so that everyone knows what we decided to do as a district and where we're going to go from there. So originally, we had decided to build our budget, and when we were building our budget, we were offsetting the original budget with some grants, so.
Can you make it bigger?
Oh, I'm sorry, sure. I'm looking at my screen, so just tell me. No, no problem, okay. You can make it bigger over there.
My glasses are failing me.
Is this in the back? Can you turn it down? Okay. Do you have to level them to full screen to see if that gives you a little bit more space? Because F11 is usually going to escape to full screen.
Not here, F11 gives me bookmarks. Sorry, is that a little better?
Yes.
Okay, it's a little better. All right. Column B could be shorter. Okay, let me do this. How's that? Nice. Is that better? Okay, sorry. A little technical difficulty. Okay, so when we started to build the budget, we were using grants to offset as well as revolving funds, which got us to, let me make A a little smaller, too, because I'm missing some information over here.
I think there's scroll bar at the bottom, that is too large.
Thank you, Ann. Okay. Which got us to the proposed budget that the school committee adopted, which was the original 7.97% increase, the mayor's proposed budget, and then that was the total mayor's cut, which was the 1,889,960. And then at the city council budget meeting, they funded the school's $254, which gave us a cut of 1,889,706. So we'd already offset our budget with grants and revolving funds, so now we're looking at where can we cut 1.889,706 from. So as you recall, we had four positions that we had worked into the budget for redistricting, and those four positions were no longer needed because we put a hold on redistricting. So those were budgeted at $75,000 each.
Can you say that really loud for the people at home? The part where you said, "No redistricting," could you say that like so loud that everybody in Greenfield?
You put a pause on redistricting. So those were the four positions that were going to be at the eighth grade, the team for history and science. And then with the lack of restructuring program for a special ed program at the high school, along with the lower enrollment, but with eighth grade at the high school, what a lot of folks don't realize with scheduling is that you can be an eighth-grade teacher and teach one, or you can be a high school teacher and teach an eighth-grade class. So you didn't need an eighth-grade team up there, an additional one. So those positions in row 13 are just an English, a science, and a history teacher that were not needed due to enrollment and the ability for the high school to absorb an eighth-grade class, and a restructuring of a special ed program. So those were four positions there. So those cuts brought us down to still needing to cut 1.277,040. And then we have heard a lot about administrative top heaviness, and we looked at our internal administration costs and where we could cut potentially. By no means do I think any of these positions should not be at the school, but we had to make cuts somewhere due to the increased budget deficit. Our nurse leader is being cut, an assistant principal at the middle school is being cut, our director of behavioral services is being cut, our network administrator is being cut, and we reduced our registrar receptionist position. Our registration was absorbed by administrative assistants at the building level, and our receptionist is no longer a dual role, so the salary decreased. So those cuts brought us down to still needing to cut $888,990. We looked at other departments because we were trying to cut those things that are not student-facing and really want to keep those positions that support our students. We ended up cutting our second district-wide maintenance worker, a CDL driver from transportation, and we reduced the 7D driver line. We left money in there because we do have subs that come in our 7D drivers, so we needed some money to absorb the sub cost for drivers.
What is a 7D driver?
I get them confused with CDL. I believe they're the van drivers, but Elizabeth can confirm. Yeah, I think it's vans. 7D is the bus, correct? Yes.
7D is the van.
Van. CDL is the bus. I don't hold either license, by the way. So then that brings us down to still needing to cut $772,728. And if you recall, you voted not to renew the high school's NIESC accreditation, so we cut the $7,500 that we had allocated in there. So the district is using an additional $765,228 of savings in order to meet the budget, which is a total funds allocated by the district of almost $4.3 million to offset this year's budget. We had three other positions in our teaching staff that could have been on the chopping block, but we chose to use savings to reserve those. They were counselors and our librarian. With our focus on literacy and our social and emotional needs, the district did not feel that that was the best cut to absorb this year, and we needed to keep them in the budget. So that is how we got to meeting the budget number. Go ahead.
Okay, so you were, okay, so back at the, the using the savings, like, so which lines, like school choice, or did you have a preference for where you were taking that from? I mean.
Which?
I'll say yet to be determined, because we may end up, as I said, if you remember back to that workshop, come July 1, we rebuild this budget from scratch. You know, this is one of the big foundations for doing so. Once we see where it is that potential changes might occur, we don't know final circuit-breaker numbers, we don't know, you know, some of the entitlement grants for next year as far as what it is, balances that we could end up using that could change what it is we ultimately end up using. But primarily, I would say that you would be looking at school choice in the sped tuition revolving account as the primary ones as well. I mean, I'd say the third one would be the transportation as well.
So I guess in all my days, unfortunately, I have to go variable today.
Can you show it on your microphone? Thanks.
So I'm going back to the need to spend more money on special ed, which just seems like of an unheard of need to keep our, need our maximum effort. So if you use money from, how do I say it? Can you use money to fund, make that difference up that would meet that maximum effort? Or is it?
The maintenance of effort calculation is based on local and state funding, so yes, we can. So if through the tuition revolving account, and if transportation funds go towards special education, transportation, those do, can be applied to meeting your federally mandated maintenance of effort calculation, yes.
Okay, because I just think of all the equipment we buy every year.
I think we need to vote, actually, to, on a budget tonight. So I have a motion prepared, and the motion includes an expression of concern about the loss of the nurse leader position in particular, an expression of interest in the administration doing all they can to pursue funding for that role in particular. So I'll make the motion and then see if there's, see if anyone will make this motion, and then see if there's a second, and then we can discuss. I move that the school committee approve the superintendent's recommended FY26 budget as presented, and further direct the administration to pursue all appropriate avenues of funding to support the addition of a nurse leader position, including but not limited to grants, municipal allocations, and available state or federal resources. And Susan Farber, I did email that to you just a few minutes ago. Is there someone who would make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by member Danie, is there a second?
Second.
Second by member Childs, and discussion. Member Goodwin.
In the past, before we had a nurse district leader, we had a stipend for somebody, a local nurse, to do those type of leadership things. Is there a way to find funds for that?
The question is, is there a way to find funds for a stipend for nurses to take on leadership roles?
So we've had the comprehensive school health services grant each year, and it actually hasn't been allowable to use for staff. But in next year's application, they have changed that, so we are hoping we can acquire those funds and pursue that. In conversations with the current nurse leader, there are just some things a nurse needs to do for the schools. Like, I am not HR, I am not an RN either, and some of the med delegations and some other issues that actually are needed to be done by a nurse. So we will be actually seeking that grant out again, and hopefully, if we get that funding, that could actually support a nurse leader, even if it was a day or two a week instead of a full-time position. The grant has been anywhere from $3,000 to $20,000. So depending on what we can actually allocate will determine how we could use those funds.
Member Sexton?
I had a question specifically about the reduction of the director of behavioral services, and this could be, this could be just me not knowing exactly what that position does as compared to maybe what Mr. Messing does, the director of pupil services, not remembering that. Great. And I was looking, just, you know, one of the areas for growth that we had was specifically establishing and implementing consistent behavioral support systems with specific rules and expectations for both, I think, maybe students and staff. But I'm wondering, is that going to be rolled into somebody else's position? Like, who is going to take on that work if we don't have the person who I think normally would lead that?
Yeah, so that's what happens with most cuts, though, is the, you know, you can talk about any line item, that's actually a viable position that someone was in, and when you lose that, someone else has to absorb that work. Our director of behavioral services works with, you know, CSO, crisis, et cetera, works with our community organizations to help families find support service, wraparound services. They attend all of our attendance meetings, work on chronic absenteeism. They chaired the restorative practice committee work with CES this spring. They go to site visits, they hold counselor meetings, they do counselor PDs because they are LICSWs. So a lot of that will either be absorbed or put off because there will be a capacity overload at some point where a building leader won't be able to take on all of those additional tasks as well.
I have a question. When, initially, when you gave the budget report to Ways and Means, there were six open bus driver positions. Is that still the case? I know that, I see that one of them was eliminated in the budget, but you said that you had only 14 filled. Is that what, we still have filled 14?
I would have to double-check on that, but our two dispatchers and our transportation coordinator have been driving, so those three have been absorbing the runs. And I don't know if there's a fourth still open, but the three of them who are normally not driving are driving.
Thank you.
Other questions? Member Goodwin?
How many positions do we have that are unfilled or open right now?
In any department?
Well, I'm thinking instructional assistants, yeah, anything.
I don't have those numbers. I do have them, but not on me. They're on a big board in my office. I can get them to you, though. Yeah.
Other questions? I'll just say, this is devastating. I mean, it's really hard to look at this plan. It's not a good plan. I mean, it's the best plan possible, I think, under the budget conditions. But I really think that the combination of the insurance situation causing so much havoc with budgets all over the place, as well as the particular number that the mayor put forward and the city council's decision not to meet our $350,000 request that could have really helped with some of this, and our staff will be feeling it, our students will be feeling it. I just don't think we should be softening the blow of that. We need to look at that directly, that that is the result of the collective decisions of the richest country on earth, forcing local communities to fund education when there's billionaires out there, and, and the decisions of the, of our representatives not to figure out healthcare, and, and then the local decisions and priorities that happen in the acrimony, some of the acrimony that we've seen over the last months. So we all need to be looking at that collectively, and we all need to do better for our students. So I just wanted to make that comment before our vote. Any, so let us move to a vote, then. Why don't we do this as a roll call vote, please? Secretary Danie? I can, let me repeat the motion just so people know what they're voting for. So the motion was that the school committee approve the superintendent's recommended FY26 budget as presented, and further direct the administration to pursue all appropriate avenues of funding to support the addition of a nurse leader position, including but not limited to grants, municipal allocations, and available state or federal resources.
Chair Johnson-Mussa?
Yes.
Secretary Danie, I'm a yes. Vice Chair Sexton?
Yes.
Member Goodwin?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Member Childs?
Yes.
Member Martini?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, we will move on to the consent agenda. So the consent agenda includes approval of meetings from May 13, 14, and May 30, approve the Greenfield Middle School Guidance Counselor and College and Career Readiness Coordinator Job Description, approve the Greenfield High School Program Believing Every Adolescent Can Open Doors Beacon Coordinator Job Description, approve the donation of three ring binders from First Federal Credit Union. Anyone want, wish to remove any of those items from the consent agenda? All right, let's have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So.
I saw a motion from member Goodwin and a second from member Childs. Any discussion? I guess we all have to do roll call anyway. Secretary Danie?
Chair Johnson-Mussa?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Member Child, uh, member Sexton, sorry, Vice Chair Sexton?
Yes.
Member Goodwin?
Yes.
Mayor Disorder?
Yes.
Member Childs?
Yes.
Member Martini?
Yes.
It is unanimous.
Okay. So on to my report and the superintendent educator summative evaluation report. So you may remember, at our last meeting, I announced you would be receiving a survey. The next day, which you did, six of the seven of us completed that survey to complete our role in evaluating the superintendent's performance. The day after all of those were received, we received, sadly received, the superintendent's resignation. So her evaluation doesn't hold the same relevance, obviously. The purpose of it is to improve the superintendent's performance. However... However, we do have to present those numbers in some of the required reporting, the, the average of our ratings for the different categories. So, I've, there's a memo that I wrote to the superintendent, giving her the, the results of those numbers, and I'm presenting it to you, to you here as well. So, that's just an update on the superintendent evaluation process. Any questions? Oh, we did not have on our agenda, we have an unanticipated item, which is a report from the redistricting committee. So, as long as it doesn't involve a ton of deliberation from us, go ahead and give us your report.
Can we stay on this for a minute?
Yes, if, if there's, yep.
So, one, I just wanted to say thank you again for providing all of the evidence, and I took my time, and I spoke to staff, and I spoke to parents and other people while I was, you know, doing my work to try to fill this survey out. And, one, I don't know what your next plans are, but I am hopeful that this evaluation is useful to you, whatever they might be, in letting the people who you plan to serve next know what a good person they're getting. Second, I, I had asked the chair about this, and I know that this does not, this is not the same as an exit interview, and I just wanted to make that available to you if you wanted it, because I think that there's a lot of valuable information, insight, lessons learned that you have, that would serve us well and would serve any incoming superintendent well as, you know, additionally, so.
Member Denis?
Is this the only time we'll have to discuss the evaluation? Are we gonna discuss it?
I don't, I'm not, yeah, I mean, there isn't really, I mean, the purpose of the evaluation is to improve the superintendent's performance. The superintendent is leaving at the end of the month.
I'm sorry, I didn't fully digest that, because I'm not fully taking in what's happening right now, because it's so tragic. I wanted to tell you, Karen, that when I was doing the evaluation, and I've done, like, a bunch of them now, I was completely overwhelmed by how incredibly well-thought-out and put-together the evidence was. Like, there was so much evidence for all of the good work that you were doing, that at one point, I was just like, I can't even take in anymore. It's just so much, it's all so great. I mean, pages and pages and pages of evidence, and I just wanted to thank you for that, because this is the first time I've ever done an evaluation where I felt competent and supported, and like, everything was in front of me, and I was able to really digest it and, and give a good evaluation. This was the first time, so thank you so much. It was truly lovely to read about all of the good work that you've done. I'm sad in this moment.
Any other questions or comments?
This, I guess, maybe, I know that you worked with a, a third party to help compile these. Did you receive a more thorough report? Is it in our packet?
So, we did work with the Collaborative for Educational Services to compile the results of the report. Because the superintendent was announced to resignation so soon after the data came in, we did not, I didn't think we would need to engage their services. We, the Assistant Superintendent assisted in working with them to get us the data we needed to present to the thing, which did involve compiling everybody's responses, but I haven't got that so recently, I haven't had a chance to review it.
Understood. The, the only, the reason that I'm asking is because I think that some of this evidence speaks to your person and your character, which cannot be replicated. Some of it speaks to practices or things that we could want a future superintendent to continue, and so those are the things I'm really interested in pulling out, especially as we might be interviewing candidates moving forward. I wanna be able to ask, hey, would you be able to support this thing that seems to be working well, you know, that is a continuation of a past practice? So, if there's anything like that, that we can learn from this information, I would love to be able to do that.
Yeah, we'll have to think about it, because at the same time, I, I don't think it makes sense to have a report, a full report of an evaluation by the school committee when the superintendent is not here to, to respond and address, so, so we'll put our thinking caps on. It's a unique situation, just given the timing of everything, so. Member Goodwin?
Was there gonna be a redistricting update?
There, yes, I was, yeah, yep, I got a little, it's not on our agenda, but I, I think we can allow it as an unanticipated item, as long as there's not a ton of deliberation and decision-making the, the committee is doing. But anything else on the evaluation report? Secretary Denis, redistricting.
I also have a brief legislative update. We have a Zoom meeting scheduled on June the 26th with Senator Sal DiDomenico's office. Don't quote me 100% on this, but if anybody would like to join to discuss the school funding follow-up from our day on the Hill, let me know, and I can send you the link. All right. The Ad Hoc Reorganizing Our Schools Subcommittee met in May with a second meeting planned for June 3rd. I secured the library venue, invited the PTOs, and prepared the agenda, but had to cancel the meeting because I did not receive materials requested from the mayor's office. The current status is that we are not closing any schools for the '25-'26 school year, and as always, we appreciate ideas and suggestions about possible reorganizing of our schools, so please send us an email, and we will keep you posted when we have another meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Great, we are moving on to the Business Manager Position Update.
So, if you recall, I was tasked with refreshing the Business Manager posting, as well as engaging in a procurement for a bid. We refreshed the school spring and Masbo postings on April 29th. We had two additional qualified applicants out of the sub in that applied. We offered interviews to both of those. One withdrew prior to the interview process. The other candidate, we interviewed on May 19th with the same committee that did the original interviews a few months prior. After that interview, that candidate actually withdrew their application as well. While we were doing that, we also engaged with the Collaborative of Educational Services in North Hampton, and they did the procurement bid for us. The bids were due on June 2nd, and one bid was received.
Thank you. Questions? Member Childs?
So, we've been having a lot of issues with candidates withdrawing. I wanted to know if you could speak to if there's something we could do that would make candidates for any job, really, in the future, more likely to follow through than to leave, or if it's just a matter of you meet with them and you can just mutually tell, yeah, this isn't the right fit.
Unfortunately, when they withdraw, based on school spring, there's no need to put an explanation. You're just hitting a link, and you can withdraw your application. I think that the moving forward is really about, you know, I think a lot of candidates, especially for a role like that, are watching meetings, watching city council, watching Ways and Means, watching school committees, so I think, you know, you're looking at what kind of environment you're getting involved in, and where you're going to end up working, and who you're going to end up working with. I can't speak to why those two withdrew. You know, I offer, you know, if they wanted to discuss, but neither candidate actually engaged, so it's really just kind of, you don't know. Some people apply for jobs because they're hoping that their current employer counters. Some people are just looking to see if there's potential out there, and then don't really wanna follow through, so there's, you know, a litany of reasons why it could be happening, and I think the candidate pool, like any jobs, are, it's very small, so I think there's just a lot of factors that are going into it. Our posting is still up, obviously, and the bid requirement, as directed by the school committee, has a 30-day clause in it, so we will continue, and, you know, we'll reach out to Masbo again and see if they can refresh again, or if they have any leads, but, you know, it's like other positions, we just keep trying.
Any other questions or comments? Okay.
I have a comment.
Yes, Mayor Disorga.
I just wanted to say, on the redistricting, I did send the information, but it actually was not on the date that you requested. It went the day before, and I was away where I was, didn't have internet access. Thank you.
Noted. All right. Let's see. Superintendent, I believe that you are leaving after this, after the, or before we go into executive session. Are you still here?
No, I'm just okay.
Oh, okay. Great. Okay, terrific. Great, then I would like to hear a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Subsection 21A, Number 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements. The committee will return to open session.
So, move.
A motion from Member Goodwin, is there a second?
Second.
A second from Vice Chair Sexton. Any discussion?
Point of order. One item that was on the executive session agenda shouldn't be, should not be discussed in executive session, as it would be a violation of open meeting law.
Well, I guess since it's on the executive session agenda, we can evaluate that in executive session, and the committee can choose to table that if it's agreed that that is somehow inappropriate. Any other discussion on the vote to enter into executive session? Secretary Denis, will you call the vote?
Chair Johnson-Massad?
Uh, yes.
I'm a yes. Vice Chair Sexton?
Yes.
Member Goodwin?
Yes.
Mayor Disorga?
I'm staying.
Member Childs?
Yes.
Member Martini?
Yes.
All right.
All right, we will enter executive session.
Almost unanimous.
We are back from executive session. Moving on to the interim superintendent interview process. So, working with Massachusetts Association of School Committees, the position was listed. I think we were surprised at the response. We have a number of applications. I had thought we might be doing some interviews tonight, but that has not been the case. We are working to schedule interviews on a fast timeframe. So, we are looking at a interview half-day on Saturday morning. The, thank you very much to everybody who responded so promptly to the poll. We have six that I know of who can be there until 11:00 AM on Saturday, five who can be there until 1:00 PM, and seven who, I mean, and only four who could be there for the whole time. That four just does not, even though it is officially a quorum, it just doesn't seem appropriate for such a momentous decision and deliberation process. So, my first question is, anybody who said they had to leave early on Saturday, can I beg you to stay longer? Is there any possibility at all that you can stay longer on Saturday morning? Secretary Denis?
I can, I can stay until 11:30, or I can come earlier.
Earlier, okay.
Early in the morning isn't a problem. I just have to open the shop by noon, so.
Okay. So, the challenge for me is, I think that you would be very interested in interviewing four of these candidates, and I don't think even, I don't know how early we could start, but I'll do what I can to get four interviews in. Does anyone else have any limitation on the, the time of day, the, the period in the morning when you can, when you can start? Okay, so, so that's one thing to explore. I don't know how reasonable it is to ask someone to come in for an interview, but, you know, there are school people, and they're used to early starts, so who knows? We'll see what we can work out. So, if not, I guess I'll just, I'll have to, you know, basically weigh the options in terms of number of candidates versus amount of time, and amount of time we spend interviewing them. So, stay tuned. Yeah, Member Goodwin?
What time does the store close? Could we, like, have a?
Come after 7:00 PM.
Do you wanna?
Some candidates might want an evening.
So, possibly a Saturday night interviews? Okay, could explore that.
Sorry.
Anyone else, would, anyone else have availability after 7:00 PM on Saturday night?
I'm sorry, how many people did you say there were?
We've had seven applications. I think four of them would be interviews, ideally.
So, the, the other three we, we don't interview, is that what happens?
Yeah, that's my proposal. I don't, I don't, I mean, if you, we would need, we would need essentially seven hours of interview time, plus probably an hour of deliberation with that number of candidates, and I honestly think it doesn't make sense. You, you know, you authorized me to work with Mass to coordinate interviews, and, that you wanna look at everyone, is that what you're saying?
Not, not everybody may, sorry, not everybody may come, but if you invite everybody, you may, why not?
I guess my, my question to that is, were, were the three people who you were not planning to, to ask in for an interview, people that you wouldn't want to consider for other reasons? Like, was there a reason why, you know, I don't, we don't need?
It's balan, it's balancing what's gonna be good use of their time, what's gonna be the good use of our time, and, you know, the, the amount of time that we have to find an interim superintendent, given that it is, you know, the second week in June.
Yeah, I guess I was just trying to get at, you know, we may have had seven applicants, but if only four were, met our qualifications, then we would only interview the ones who met our qualifications, right?
I mean, the minimum qualifications as described in the interview, in, in the job description, I think, yes, I, I think there's, there isn't anyone who you would just say, no, they didn't, they, they don't have these particular certifications or whatnot. So, I may be asking for a vote on this from, from you all. Member Childs, and then Member Denis?
Is there any way that we could also do some Sunday interviews, just because of the time crunch?
I, I can explore, but I think, yeah, I mean, if you want to do four hours of interviews on Saturday and four hours on, on Sunday, you know, with a vote, we can explore that. I, I, I don't recommend it, honestly. I don't, I think the, the other, the other thing you want, you know, in, in a compressed timeline like this, you don't have the opportunity of having a screening committee that, where someone could apply without being in a public session and being interviewed publicly. I think it's generally understood, if you come to the committee for a public interview that's being streamed on YouTube, that you are, the, the committee thinks you're likely to, you know, be hired for that position, and it has a reputation. you know, be hired for that position, and it has a reputational impact in terms of wherever you're already currently working. So that's the other thing I'd like you to weigh. Member Goodwin, and then Member Denieve?
So is this something we have to do public? We can't do it in executive session? I mean?
No, we think it has to be done in public, yes. It is required.
I always thought the second?
That is why, that is why I appreciated the vote of the school committee to authorize me to coordinate the interviews, because it, because everyone that we choose to, and I think at that time, we may have anticipated not so many, not so many people applying within, you know, five days of the interview, so that speaks well of Greenfield and the opportunity that, that is here. So I guess before we do more discussion, I'd like to hear if anyone is willing, a motion to authorize me to select, input forward to you in consultation with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees for candidates for you to, for the, for the committee to interview. Is there anyone who would make that motion? Not hearing it, so we will pursue all seven and try to coordinate times for, for the seven hours of interviews. Member Goodwin?
Can we get materials before the interviews?
Yes, their, their, their resumes and cover letters and, and recommendations and everything, yes.
Thank you.
Secretary Denieve?
The interview process, will we be asking questions? And if so, who has decided on the questions? Are we using past questions?
There, I will work with MAS to create, to create interview questions, and there will be a period of time for the committee to consider those questions and go over the process before the interviews begin.
Okay, great.
Member Childs?
So how much of the deliberation and decision is at the end of those interviews? Same session versus at a different session? I've never gone through this process before, so I don't know how it works.
Well, neither have I, but I think that we're talking about seven hours of interviews. It all depends on the committee's interest in meetings. Do you want to have the interviews and then have a separate meeting to, to vote on the candidate? I'm just saying, we're running out of time. I mean, I want all these things too, but.
My concern is if we just go straight from interview to deliberation decision, that doesn't give much time for our school community to weigh in.
No, there is not a lot of time for this, for, I mean, the compressed timeframe does limit the amount of engagement that can be done with the, you know, when you're hiring for a full superintendent and you have many months to plan, then you have meet and greets, and you go and visit their schools, and you, you engage with the community and all those things, and we're do, you know, part of what we discussed at the meeting was, it is a compressed timeframe and needing to factor that in. There, I, you know, we have made a commitment to have representation of staff and unions and community involved in the process, but it won't be as much community engagement as if you were looking for an interim, even if you were looking for an interim and you had more time to find someone, you know.
Would we at least be able to have a public comment after interviews prior to deliberation?
Yes, we will have, we will have public comment at any, at all full committee meetings, and we can time that public comment whenever we want, so I could certainly put it before the votes. Secretary Denieve?
What is the timeframe we're seeking from an interim superintendent?
One year, I think is what we're looking for, but.
So essentially, as soon as we get this person, we have to be immediately at work to find a permanent?
Yes.
And then we can have all of the time to do all of the searchy and the talking and the planning and the, uh huh, okay? Just making sure everyone knows that this process doesn't stop in two weeks when we find a temporary.
Member Goodwin?
So in my history, there's, I sat through three interim searches. I don't ever remember them being public. They were always a private, and it was really out of respect for the candidates, because they didn't want people to know they were looking. So it was executive session with the full school committee, and.
I think what you might be referring to sometimes is school committee has the capacity to create a screening committee, and then they would put forward their recommendation, and then the school committee would vote on that particular person. But the deliberations and the interview of this, of the candidate is done in public by the school committee, and the vote happens in public, the deliberations happen in public. There is no executive session for school committee members to deliberate about the hiring of an interim or a permanent superintendent in executive session. Okay, well, I might, I guess what I'm going to do is talk to Liz Lefont and let her know the committee's decision to offer an interview to every candidate. I would like, I will also tell Liz, Liz Lefont from MAS, that to inform the candidates of that decision, I think that's only fair, that, that essentially every candidate is being interviewed, so that they can weigh whether or not they want to withdraw based on the fact that there has been no pre-screening. Okay. Great. I, that's the end of our agenda, but I'm going to take a point of personal privilege for a second. I just wanted to send my appreciation to you, Karen, for your incredibly hard work, and I've never heard staff come forward during, at the end of a negotiation process and talk about what a pleasure it was to work with the superintendent in that process. That just has never happened, to my knowledge. We've heard so many testimonials from staff who follow you and appreciate you, don't always agree with you, but see how hard you've worked every day that you've worked here. You have worked here for 16 years as a teacher, administrator, superintendent, and I've had the immense pleasure of working with you, and I felt like I learned so much from the way you lead, and, and your friendship means the world to me, so I just wanted to appreciate you and thank you for all you do, and wish you the best of luck with your future endeavors. I hope they, I hope they deserve you. Okay. I'd like to hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A motion from Member Childs, and a second from Member Goodwin. Any discussion? Secretary Denieve, will you call the vote?
Chair Johnson Musad?
Yes.
I mean, yes. Vice Chair Sexton?
Yes.
Member Goodwin?
Yes.
Mayor Disorga?
Yes.
Member Childs?
Yes.
We're unanimous.